Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think this will be interesting. Calling in on this end.
Are you making progress?
Scott, can you hear us? This is Ella McGowan.
Yes, I can hear you very well, Ella. Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Ralph, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Board members, would you like to test your mics briefly before we get started?
Testing.
Test.
Test.
Got it. Is it working? I don't like to have it on.
Thank you.
Lonnie, is yours working?
Mine is working. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And Ella, can you tell me, or with the exception of Lonnie and myself who are remote, are all the other members of the Compensation Board present?
Sorry, Scott. All members, but we are waiting on Mr. Chido.
Oh, okay. Good.
Are you okay with that public comment? Is that three minutes?
That's fine.
I hope he was gonna talk, maybe Ray, but that's not me.
Ray.
You got one person.
Yeah. Does that ring? It's his last name. Yeah, does that ring? What is it? Josie Lewis is attempting to call him at this moment.
Great. Well, we'll give him a couple of minutes. It's now five after. I want to be respectful of everyone's time, and I understand Mr. Chido hopefully will still join us, but I think we should probably go ahead and get started unless anybody has a problem with that.
No problem here. Scott.
Mr. Brennan, HR did get in contact with Mr. Chido, and he stated he is on his way. Just wanted to share that information.
Do we know when he's gonna join us?
No.
Well, we're gonna start with some sort of administrative stuff anyway. I guess my suggestion is we go ahead and proceed, and hopefully he'll be here very soon. So, with that, as the current Chair of the Polk County Compensation Board, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 1:00 PM or 1:06 PM on February 5th, 2025. And my apologies for being remote. Let's at least do a roll call if we could, and if you'd indicate who you are a designee for, that would be great. I'll start. Scott Brennan, designee of the Supervisors.
Brad Skinner, designee, Sheriff.
Jennifer Galloway, designee of the County Attorney.
Joe Quinn, designee of the Board of Supervisors.
Candy Morgan, designee of the Recorder.
And then I'll go. Lonnie Daphne, designee for the Treasurer.
Terrific. Well, thank you all for participating, and thank you, Mr. Marasco, for calling in. Hopefully you are somewhere very fun. But with that, I believe Mr. Skinner might have an issue to take up prior to actually following the tentative agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I would just like to, before we proceed down the agenda, I would like to adopt it with a change to allow public comment. Few minutes. We're a meeting in public, not a public meeting, so I get that, but if anyone has an objection to that, otherwise I'll just make a motion to amend the agenda to include after approval of the minutes, a public comment section, and keep that at, say, three minutes, if that's okay?
Is there a second?
Second.
Terrific. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I would add is I think that should be added to any future agendas as well, just the public comment thereafter the approval of last year's minutes.
And I will just say for myself, I certainly agree, certainly a number of boards that I'm counselled to or that I serve on have an opportunity for public comment, and frankly, I think I just, I think we've missed it over the years, and we should do it. So, with that, unless there are any other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is adopted as amended. With that, the next point in the agenda is the election of Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. Are there any nominations?
I'd nominate Scott Brennan as Chairperson.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any further nominations?
Move to close.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, I think. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd nominate Joe Quinn.
A second.
Any further nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And I believe, just so I can, I want to confirm, Mr. Skinner, so the motion to amend the agenda, the public comment's gonna come after the minutes, is that correct?
Yeah, I figured we'd get last year's business taken care of, and a little administration, and then get in, and then allow that. That was the rationale.
Perfect. Certainly. If anyone's had a chance to review the 2025 minute, 2425 minutes, if they want to move those.
This is Lonnie. They're moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've heard a second. Is there any discussion related to the fiscal year 2425 minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. And now, with our amended agenda, this is the point in time for any public to make comment. I would suggest, again, in light of the fact that we are all volunteers, that any public comment be limited to three minutes, and I apologize for not being in the room, but Mr. Quinn is in the room, and so, Joe, if you would recognize any member of the public who would seek to speak and be mindful of the three-minute timeframe.
Anyone like to address the board?
Please identify yourself.
Name is Ray Sears, 1725 Waters Edge Drive in Pleasant Hill, Iowa.
Thank you.
I'm relatively new to this process, and therefore I have a few questions as to what the board actually considers when they establish the salaries for the elected officials. It appears in the past, it's simply a matter of whether they get a 4% raise, a 3% raise, or whatever, and you try to compare that to other jurisdictions and what other elected officials are paid. Does this board ever consider all of the other fringe benefits that go onto the pay of an elected official? That's my first question, and it relates specifically to the Deferred Compensation Program. The Deferred Compensation Program is available to all county employees with a twist for elected officials. In fact, every elected official who participates in Deferred Compensation Program receives a 6% contribution to their deferred comp account. I don't know what that's for. It's not based on anything. It's not on production or quality of work. It's just there. You know, it's almost like a bonus, and if it's good enough for the elected officials, why is it not good enough for all the employees who actually do the work? But I'm wondering if you consider that as part of their compensation. I believe it should be, and I believe that this should be taken into consideration when you raise the salary. The county has, as part of the IPRs retirement system, and IPRs is very, very generous. It is not unheard of for a long-term employee to retire, depending on their salary, you know, with $10,000, $12,000, $15,000 a month in retirement just through IPRs. And then you add the deferred comp, which the taxpayer matches, $1 for every $2, and that's on top of that. And on top of that is Social Security. My opinion is that you all don't run for office and get elected, you know, to enrich yourself, and I believe that that's what's happening. I have some personal experience with the depth of the involvement of an elected official, and quite frankly, I think that you should consider all of those factors when you decide whether or not to provide them with an increase. My second issue.
And we're at three minutes right now, so if you could maybe get your second issue out, and then we'll give.
My second issue would be quite brief. I would hope that this commission were considering how much payment would go to a Polk County Supervisor who declares that their job is part-time. Do you really want to pay $150,000 plus to an employee who says they only work part-time? That's a pretty good payment, you know, and when we talk about these payments, it's not out of your pocket, you know, it's out of the taxpayer's pocket. Every decision you make cascades down to other employees and also is paid for by the taxpayer. I would hope that you would address both of these issues as you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, Mr. Sears. Next on the agenda is.
Scott, it should be noted that, Scott, Mr. Chido's here now.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chido.
Sorry I'm late, but somehow or other, I had an email that said that, meaning I've been changed to two. I don't know how that happened, but I apologize for obviously reading it wrong.
That is just fine. We have not even approved Robert's Rules of Order, so your timing is perfect. Is there a motion to approve the use of Robert's Rules of Order?
Move.
Second.
Move, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Robert's Rules of Orders will govern. We're now on to the next item, which is discussion, motions, and any other business. Are there any motions to come before this body?
Mr. Chair, I assume you're the Chair?
Scott's the Chair.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Scott. Now, I'd like to bring up for discussion some ideas that I have, that are based on my many years of historical experience with this commission. I've been on it 20 years now. Before that, I was county auditor, served it on the Compensation Board for 20 years, been involved with charter commissions evaluating county government, reapportionment committee, deciding the districts, worked for the county as a lobbyist, had many other interactions with the county over the years. So I think I have a perspective to offer some suggestions in the vein that I'm gonna be offering, and my first suggestion, and I'm gonna divide it up into two pieces, I'm gonna separate my comments on the Board, for the Board of Supervisors separately from my comments with the other officeholders, and I want to address my concerns and observations and recommendations on the Board of Supervisors. And with all the controversy that's occurring right now, I think this is an opportune time to step back and take a look at things, and right now, the current controversy is whether it should be, members are gonna be part-time and full-time. Well, the code specifically allows supervisors to be part-time, but it doesn't address anything in the order of compensation as far as full-time, part-time compensation. So that pretty much leaves it up to jurisdiction of the county under home rule and falls, therefore, under the preview of the Compensation Commission. So, in that vein, I think it is important that we clearly set out a structure to address the current situation, where we have some supervisors wanting to be full-time and some saying that they want to be part-time. Well, I think they have the right to choose, and I think if you're gonna be a full-time supervisor, you're entitled to the full-time pay of a supervisor. But if you choose to be a part-time supervisor, I think you ought to be compensated on a part-time basis. And in that vein, I would suggest that any recommendation we make to the Board as far as compensation be conditioned on the fact that a supervisor each year declares whether they're gonna be part-time or full-time. And if they declare they're gonna be full-time, then they entitled to full-time compensation. If they declare they're gonna be part-time, then their compensation will be based on their hourly rate of $75 an hour. That's $150,000 divided by 2,000 hours. And a full-time supervisor would basically mean that the supervisor would maintain normal county office hours, just like any other county employee or officeholder, treasurer, recorder, auditor, sheriff, county attorney, and just like they do, keep full office hours. But if you're gonna be part-time, you ought to be required to keep track of your hours and then get paid accordingly. And keep track of their hours just like any other professional does. A lawyer keeps track of his hours when he's dealing with a client. Your electrician, when he comes to your house, keeps track of his hours when he works on your electrical service. So it's not unusual to keep track of your time and get compensated based on your time. I think that's both fair to the taxpayer and to the supervisor who's decided to do the work part-time, and also would address the fact that they want to hold another job at the same time. I think that puts some structure on that choice that the supervisor might make, and is in the best interest of both the supervisor and the county taxpayers. Now, full-time means that they keep office, bring their office hours. Part-time means you keep track of your hours. And I think that would be the first part of my recommendation, is that we proceed along that vein. I'd be interested in comments or observations.
Is that by way of a motion, Mr. Chido?
I'd like to have some discussion before I make it a motion. Otherwise, I will make it in form of a motion, that we freeze supervisors' compensation at $150,000 for full-time, and that we create a category for a part-time supervisor at $75 per hour with the following stipulation of the definition of full-time and part-time. If you want it in a motion, I'll make it in form of a motion.
Ned, wait before you make a motion, because I do want to, as a part of discussion, I want to make sure that, Ralph, are you on the, can you hear? I know your speaker's off, but can you hear what Ned had just suggested?
Yes, Mr. Skinner. I've heard Mr. Chido's discussion and/or motion.
Am I correct that the Code section that we operate under allows us to do exactly what he says in our recommended compensation schedule there in 331?
In 907, I believe the Compensation Board has the authority to set Board of Supervisors' salary separately and distinctly from the rest of the elected officials that are special to the Sheriff. The Code doesn't contemplate the difference, distinction between part-time and full-time, but I don't find any authority in the Code section that addresses that issue specifically that would prohibit such a decision by the Comp Board.
Right. And what I was reading was that portion of 331-907, Paragraph 2, that says, "In determining the final compensation schedule for the elected county officers, the Board of Supervisors may set compensation at less than the compensation provided in the current compensation schedule if the position is reduced to part-time under the recommended compensation schedule." That recommended compensation schedule can only come from us, because they can't recommend their own compensation schedule. They can just vote ours down or do something else with it.
Correct. My point was, the Code appears.
deciding the districts, worked for the county as a lobbyist, had many other interactions with the county over the years. So I think I have a perspective to offer some suggestions in the vein that I'm going to be offering. And my first suggestion, and I'm going to divide it up into two pieces, I'm going to separate my comments on the board, for the Board of Supervisors separately from my comments with the other office holders, and I want to address my concerns and observations and recommendations on the Board of Supervisors. And with all the controversy that's occurring right now, I think this is an opportune time to step back and take a look at things. And right now, the current controversy is whether it should be, members are going to be part-time and full-time. Well, the code specifically allows supervisors to be part-time, but it doesn't address anything in the order of compensation as far as full-time, part-time compensation. So that pretty much leaves it up to jurisdiction of the county under home rule and falls therefore under the preview of the Compensation Commission. So in that vein, I think it is important that we clearly set out a structure to address the current situation where we have some supervisors wanting to be full-time and some saying that they want to be part-time. Well, I think they have the right to choose, and I think if you're going to be a full-time supervisor, you're entitled to the full-time pay of a supervisor. But if you choose to be a part-time supervisor, I think you ought to be compensated on a part-time basis. And in that vein, I would suggest that any recommendation we make to the Board as far as compensation be conditioned on the fact that a supervisor each year declares whether they're going to be part-time or full-time. And if they declare they're going to be full-time, then they entitled to full-time compensation. If they declare they're going to be part-time, then their compensation will be based on their hourly rate of $75 an hour. That's $150,000 divided by 2,000 hours. And a full-time supervisor would basically mean that he would, the supervisor would maintain normal county office hours, just like any other county employee or office holder, treasurer, recorder, auditor, sheriff, county attorney, and just like they do, keep full office hours. But if you're going to be part-time, you ought to be required to keep track of your hours and then get paid accordingly. And keep track of their hours just like any other professional does. This lawyer keeps track of his hours when he's dealing with a client. Yeah, your electrician, when he comes to your house, keeps track of his hours when he works on your electrical service. So it's not unusual to keep track of your time and get compensated based on your time. I think that's both fair to the taxpayer and to the supervisor who's decided to do the work part-time. And also would address the fact that they want to hold another job at the same time. I think that it puts some structure on that, that choice that the supervisor might make and is in the best interest of both the supervisor and the county taxpayers. Now, full-time means that they keep office, bring their office hours. Part-time means you keep track of your hours. And I think that would be the first part of my recommendation, is that we proceed along that vein. I'd be interested in comments or observations.
Is that by way of a motion, Mr. Chido?
I'd like to have some discussion before I make it a motion. Otherwise, I will make it in form of a motion that we freeze supervisors' compensation $150,000 for full-time and that we create a category for a part-time supervisor at $75 per hour with the following stipulation of the definition of full-time and part-time. If you want it in a motion, I'll make it in form of a motion.
Ned, wait before you make a motion, because I do want to, as a part of discussion, I want to make sure that, Ralph, are you on the, can you hear, I know your speaker's off, but can you hear what Ned had just suggested?
Yes, Mr. Skinner, I've heard Mr. Chido's discussion and/or motion.
Am I correct that the code section that we operate under allows us to do exactly what he says in our recommended compensation schedule there in 331?
In 907, I believe the compensation board has the authority to set Board of Supervisor's salary separately and distinctly from the rest of the elected officials at the expense of the sheriff. The code doesn't contemplate the different distinction between part-time and full-time, but I don't find any authority in the code section that addresses that issue specifically that would prohibit such a decision by the Comp Board.
Right. And what I was reading was the, that portion of 331, 907, paragraph two, that says, "In determining the final compensation, schedule for the elected county officers, the Board of Supervisors may set compensation at less than the compensation provided in the current compensation schedule if the position is reduced to part-time under the recommended compensation schedule." That recommended compensation schedule can only come from us, because they can't recommend their own compensation schedule. They can just vote ours down or do something else with it.
Correct. My point was, the code appears to contemplate all or nothing, either full-time or part-time, but not just two different ones on the same board. But again, I don't believe that the statute is written would prohibit that either.
Thank you.
Mr. Marasco, this is Joe Quinn. That was going to be my question. It talks about deposition, and I don't see that the statute contemplates making two different awards or two different recommendations for the same position. In other words, two different awards for the Board of Supervisors based on whatever standards we would decide. I don't see that that's the boards, within the boards' purview. I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree with your, Mr. Quinn, I agree with your assessment that it does limit it to the position itself. And as I stated, I don't believe the code contemplates having two separate pay scales or the distinction between a part-time and full-time on the same board. Seems to me that the code was more contemplating whether it's going to be all or nothing. But again, it doesn't really say that you can't either.
But it does, Ralph, I just have a clarifying question. But it does say that the Board of Supervisor, it does distinguish between part-time and full-time, that the Board of Supervisors may set that differently. So it does somewhat contemplate that in that code section. It just doesn't say that specifically coming from the Compensation Board, correct?
Also under home rule.
Is that, is that my understand, is that how you read that, Ralph?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Ms. Galloway.
Well, my question is, is that it clearly talks about the differentiation between part-time and full-time, and that the Board of Supervisors may set compensation differently. It just doesn't specifically say that as it relates to coming from the Compensation Board and that being differentiated from the Board. Is that...
I see, I see what you're saying. It refers to the supervisors as opposed to the Compensation Commission.
Yes, yes. It does, it's just not clear as it relates to how that would come from the Compensation Board.
So if you just look at the beginning of that subsection two, it says, "The county Compensation Board shall submit its recommendation, recommended compensation schedule for the next fiscal year to the Board of Supervisors for inclusion in the county budget." It does not indicate, again, or contemplate, in my opinion, that distinction between full-time and part-time on the same board, but I can't point to something that would say that would be absolutely prohibited either.
And since it doesn't prohibit it under home rule, it's, you can do it. The county can do it. County Compensation Board can do it.
Go the other direction. Let's say you're a Board of Supervisor, you're a supervisor. Can you move it to part-time if we don't provide it to them in our recommended compensation schedule? It doesn't appear to me that they can make the decision to reduce it to part-time unless we provide some sort of guidance.
Well, they can certainly work, they can certainly work part-time under full-time pay if they choose to, but I don't think that's very transparent nor very acceptable to the taxpayer if they expect to be paying them full-time wages to work part-time. And I don't see what's wrong with somebody getting paid part-time for part-time work. Everybody, I don't see anybody else in the world getting paid full-time for part-time work. And I certainly don't think they, somebody in office ought to be doing that at the taxpayer's expense. They want to work part-time, that's between them and their voters, and they can justify that when they run for office, but don't recollect in full-time and compensation for working part-time.
Isn't there a question as to how you define work? I mean, to me, we have supervisors that work from, you know, six in the morning till midnight, or we have had in the past, and others you don't see as often, although they're still working. I mean, I think there's a huge question of telling how is an elected official working?
Fair enough, I agree. But at the same time, if they've already declared that they're allocating part-time time to this employment, then they're saying that it's part-time.
And my objection to this proposal that Ned gave us is, full-time means a supervisor intends to keep normal county office hours, just as any other county employee does. And to me, the work of a supervisor is not necessarily sitting up there in their office with normal office hours. I don't think it would work. I don't think it's practical. It's a drastic impingement on what they have now.
Before we continue, sorry, excuse me, excuse me, sorry. Ms. Daphne's had her hand up for some time, if you'd like to speak, Lonnie.
Yeah, no, thanks. Thank you for that. Well, and I don't, I didn't recognize voices, but the last person just was going to, she stated what I was going to state, but I did want to go back to the, what our role is, but then in that section two, it is actually, I mean, while it was stated that we have to give them a compensation schedule, but the final compensation, if it's going to be less than in that section, reduce the part-time just some by the supervisors. And so I don't know that we can give them a recommendation simply because our compensation schedule, without doing all of the work and trying to determine the hours and all that good stuff, that would take a whole lot more. But when they're submitting their budget, they can make the distinction between part-time and full-time in their recommendation of the Comp Schedule that moves forward.
Mr. Brennan, this is Joe Quinn. My concern is, what is the definition of full-time and part-time? I mean, I know in the private sector, full-time can sometimes be 35 hours as opposed to 40 hours. And I don't think that's in our purview to be able to make those definitions. I don't think that's within our authority under the statute. Don't get me wrong, I am very concerned with some of what we've heard about, maybe some changes in the way some of the supervisors are going to approach their jobs, but I, and I have not talked to any of them. But I also would say that I'm not sure they have actually said that they intend to be part-time. I think they've indicated that they intend to continue with their outside employment. And, you know, for purposes of argument, maybe they're going to work a two-full-time job schedule. I don't know, but I think those are the issues that come up when we try to go beyond our statutory responsibilities, which is basically just to set the compensation for the positions as they are structured today.
Look, we're talking about somebody who's declared that they want to work part-time at the supervisor's position. So obviously, they have in their mind a picture of what that's going to mean. They're going to be part-time. That means, in their mind, they're going to put certain hours to the job. Well, all I'm suggesting is that they put down on paper what that picture of them working that part-time position means and being compensated appropriately for putting in what they have determined fulfills their retirement requirement as a part-time employee. That's all I'm suggesting. You get paid for what you do. They have already said they only want to do it part-time, so they get part-time pay. That seems to me to be as logical as can be.
I guess my concern here is that I certainly have never been told by any of the members of Board of Supervisors that they intend to be part-time. I understand there's been some reporting in the press along those lines, but I've not been told that. And I'm also very uncomfortable setting up essentially billable hours for full-time and part-time supervisors. You know, I mean, the supervisors, I know the supervisors I see at events early in the morning, late at night, I mean, they have, you know, very, well, a number of commitments. And so it makes me uncomfortable that now we would try to put our thumb on what they're doing and how they are performing their job, and I don't think that is within our purview.
Well, I'd be willing to take out the language about what defines full-time, what full-time means, but I certainly stand by the requirement that a part, somebody who's declared they're going to be part-time, draw a picture on paper of what they mean by part-time and be compensated on what their picture of that part-time means. That's all I'm saying. If you're going to be part-time, fine, we'll compensate you on a part-time basis. Tell us what it means. How many hours does part-time mean? We'll pay you for what you think it means. Pretty simple.
Mr. Chair, Frank Marasco, will I be able to speak?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments, given that I've been a part of this committee, come into these meetings for quite some time too. Past practice would be that this committee would set the pay schedule, the compensation schedule, the salary as the positions sit today. I would argue that I have not heard any supervisor state that they're going to work part-time. Regardless, setting the salary is for the position itself as it sits today. It should not be based on any one individual. For instance, you should set the salary recommendation for the sheriff, the Polk County Sheriff, not Kevin Schneider. And so I think getting into individuals is outside of the purview by chapter 331, 907. And I also think when you get into part-time and full-time, even though it's mentioned briefly in there, that gets more into the Charter of Government, which I think, again, is outside of the purview of how I feel this committee is statutorily obligated to operate.
Thank you.
I'm at a loss for words. I can't imagine, I can't imagine that somebody who's declares that they're going to work the job part-time should expect full-time pay and that this committee would go along with it. I just, I just don't think that taxpayers of this community would agree with that concept if they've declared they're going to work part-time and hold another job besides, then they ought to be compensated accordingly. I just, it's out of control if you're going to just throw money at somebody for doing nothing.
And this is Joe Quinn. Mr. Chido, I don't disagree with everything that you're saying, but I don't think we have the authority to do anything about it. And I would also note that I believe in the past, there have been past supervisors who have also continued outside endeavors in the private sector while at the same time serving as a supervisor. So this may be somewhat different than what we've seen in the past, and if, in fact, the two newest supervisors are not working full-time or filling their obligations, requirements of the office, I believe it would be up to the voters to make that determination at the next election.
If your opinion is backed up for public comment, then I would like to comment.
Yeah, and we're not going to do that right now.
Who's this guy?
He advises the board.
To your staff?
Yeah.
Very good.
For voting purposes, going to move this along. I'll second Ned's motion. If that motion is made, and we'll see where the vote goes.
Let me reform, let me reform that motion if I could. I would move that the Board of Supervisors be compensated at $150,000 a year if they declare themselves to be full-time, and if they declare themselves to be part-time, they be paid at a part-time salary of $75 an hour per hour submitted by that supervisor for hours worked.
I'll second that.
And now we'll go to discussion of the pending motion.
Mr. Chair, maybe...
I might just make a comment. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'd like to make a quick comment. So I've already, I think I've already expressed my concerns about the fact that I think we are getting a little far afield by, beyond the purview of this committee. I also have a concern, frankly, of just setting the supervisor's salary at a hard number. We haven't even had a discussion about whether or not, you know, we want to talk about raising the supervisor's salary, because that would be certainly a miniscule raise as to what they made in the past, last year. So for those reasons, I think I'm going to vote no on this motion.
I mean, I guess what I would say is that I, I agree with Mr. Chido's concerns. I think that there certainly is a differentiation between whether or not you're going to provide part-time and work or full-time work, but if the code doesn't provide for us to distinguish that, then I don't, I don't know if we have the authority to do that. And I do get nervous about, you know, setting a particular, I guess, compensation with, when we haven't even talked about an increase, which is essentially what, or whatever we're going to recommend is essentially what we're charged with the responsibility of doing. So I really am struggling with how to, how to resolve that.
This is Lonnie, and I'd say the same or similar in nature, that I think I agree, and maybe it's somewhere that we express those concerns to the supervisors that is related to the actual board and our purview, it is to set the compensation salary schedule, and they aren't in charge of determining part-time work, et cetera, and making those recommendations in the budget. So I agree with the concerns, but I don't feel like it's our role to do that.
This is time to call the question.
Did you second the motion?
Yes.
Scott, do you want to set a vote on it then?
We need to vote then on calling of the question. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. The question has been called. Let's do this by roll call, I think would be the appropriate way to do it. We know what the pending motion is. Mr. Chido?
Aye.
Mr. Chido's an aye. Mr. Quinn?
Nay.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Ms. Galloway?
Nay.
Ms. Daphne?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
And I am a no. The motion fails four to two. Are there any other business to come before the committee?
Yeah. I'd also like the Board, this commission, to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And this would be just an ad hoc kind of thing. Recommend to the Board of Supervisors that, under the current set of circumstances where they don't have a county manager in place, and there's turmoil in how they're going to operate in the future, that they step back and take a comprehensive review of how they're structured with the possibility of eliminating the county manager position and moving those to the chairman of the board. Right now, you've got, you're developing a situation where you have two kingdoms of sorts. You have the Board of Supervisors with the chairman of the board, and they have the county manager who's not responsible to any one person but operates somewhat independently, and then if that county manager wants to go and shop and get three votes, can circumvent the county chair or anybody else, and in effect becomes a sixth member of the Board of Supervisors. And I don't think that was really... a sixth member of the Board of Supervisors. And I don't think that was originally intended through the organizational structure. So, I think it is a really good time for the Board of Supervisors to step back and take a look at how they're organized. Maybe they'll come up with nothing different, but at least they ought to take a pause with this window opening of not having a county manager before they move forward with that hire, to review what the structure should look like in the future, and what truly the responsibilities and are, are or should be of the new county manager, if that, in fact, is what they're going to call out that person or have that person be. I just think it's long overdue. We haven't had a real look at how county government operates since the charter commissions. And I'm going to tell you, it's way out of whack, and we're basically paying a half a million dollars wages for duplicate services. And then, you have the manager's office, and you have Board of Supervisors. And the Chairman of the Board and the manager are more or less on equal footing, the way the structure is right now. And I don't think that's the way it was ever intended to be. I think the county manager needs to be subservient to the, to the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, who speaks with the authority of the Board of Supervisors, not be able to operate independently without going through the Chair and the Board as that person can do now. And I think, I think the board needs to take a look at that, and maybe restructure some things before they move forward with the new hire. And I think this would be an opportune time to do it. And I'm suggesting that this board at least suggest to the Board of Supervisors that they ought to take a look at their structure. Because moving forward, I would be very reluctant to continue to support any kind of pay increases or even the compensation level they're at now, if the current structure is to continue into the future. So, I was, I would hope that the board would, this commission would consider, at least in the, in the notes with our recommendation, that we suggest that maybe they ought to look at reevaluating their organizational structure. So, what I would hope is that this commission would support the suggestion that the supervisors look at their organizational structure, review their organizational structure. I don't know if you want that in a form of a motion or what. I'm just suggesting that we ought to go on record as telling them that we think that'd be a pretty good idea.
Ned, I agree with you.
Well, certainly, and certainly, the minutes that will come out of this meeting will obviously reflect that. My understanding is that maybe there is some press in the room, in which case, hopefully, that'll get reported as well. And I think the concerns related to full-time versus part-time are also, have come to the forefront. And I would hope that the supervisors would consider all of these issues, you know, because now we've talked about them. Again, I'm just not sure that that falls within our purview that we can suggest the supervisors talk about their own structure.
It's, the suggestion can come from anybody. It doesn't necessarily have to come from it. Just as normal citizens, we have a right to make the suggestion. I think it carries a little more clout. The suggestion carries a little more clout if it comes from somebody who's at least invested in the process. And they can take it, or they can leave it, but at least they have some support for doing it, if in their view, they think it's worthwhile. They don't have to, don't have to come up, take responsibility for coming up with the idea on their own. They have some public support for the idea of reevaluating how they operate. I think that's only good government, that occasionally you step back and look at how you're organized and how you run things. And the only thing we're suggesting, would be suggesting, is that a board, this would be an opportune time to take advantage of that and review how they operate. They can take it or leave it, but I think it comes with a little more clout if a group like this says, hey, you ought to at least look at that. That's the only thing I'm suggesting. That's the only thing this would do, is make a strong suggestion that they do that. Would not require them to do that. It would just be a suggestion that came from the citizens through this committee.
Is there a pending motion?
Do you want it in the form of a motion? I move that we, I mean, I would, okay, I would move that we suggest to the Board of Supervisors that they step back and take a look at how they're organized, through a comprehensive review that they think is appropriate. That's all I'm suggesting.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second the motion, but Ned, I want you to understand that I don't think that we have anywhere near the authority to even consider something like this. I wish, I wish that we did, but all we can do is set compensation. And if we had, and so, I'm seconding it, only from a standpoint of at least it's there, clearer in the minutes than having a motion just die without a second. I'll do that, so, because I agree with you. But I don't think that this is board's role at all. But I appreciate your comments. I do.
If I may interrupt before there's any further discussion, this is Ralph.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chido's used a specific term of art that's contemplated in the code by referring to the county manager. That is a actual, specific form of government. Polk County is, form of government, is under the Board of Supervisors' form of government. And so, if you're going to make a record regarding this, it would suggest that you change the terminology from county manager to county administrator. I would also advise the board that there is legislation pending that would require a county of the size of Polk County to only be able to use the Board of Supervisors' form of government, which would eliminate the possibility of having a county manager. Polk County currently just uses a county administrator to administer or shepherd possible legislation the board will consider.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Again, let's do this by roll-call. That seems to make sense. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Ms. Daphne? Ms. Daphne?
Sign mute.
We'll come back to her in a moment. Mr. Chido?
Aye.
Quinn?
Nay.
Ms. Galloway?
Nay.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
And I am also going to vote no, just from the standpoint that I do believe it is beyond our purview. Ms. Daphne?
Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying, my computer updated, and it would let me unmute. My answer is no.
Okay. The noes have it. Are there any other motions to come before this board?
I move that the current salary of the Board of Supervisors members be frozen where it is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is Lonnie. I would just be curious as to why they freeze.
The code doesn't allow us to reduce salaries. And so, if you're of the opinion that it's high enough, then the only thing I can think to do is freeze it where it is.
My understanding of all, please, go ahead.
I'm not sure that the code prohibits us.
This was Lonnie. It was, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, are we, are we of that opinion, or is that an opinion?
I disagree with what, that we don't have the authority to lower the compensation if we chose to. I don't see anything that would prohibit us from doing that.
No. Mr. Chido, do you have statutory authority for that?
I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I'm suggesting that we could if we wanted to.
Again, Mr. Chido, do you have any, in the statute where it says we can lower the compensation?
It doesn't say we can't, so therefore, we can. Home rule provides that you can do anything that's not prohibited.
The statute actually mentions that the supervisors can decrease, but not the compensation board.
Doesn't prohibit, if it doesn't prohibit, then it's prohibited, then it's permitted. That's a statute home rule.
Ms. Morgan is the maker of the motion. Would you maybe expand a little bit on the thoughts behind your motion?
I think that the current rate is a very reasonable rate. It's one of the higher in the state for supervisors. And admittedly, they have a big job, but I don't see a reason to increase the salaries, and particularly in light of the comments that have been made about the full-time, part-time. I think it's a situation we need to try to build our way out of, and that's the only thing I can think of to start.
Mr. Brennan, this is Joe Quinn. I would vote no on a freeze of the Board of Supervisors' salaries. Again, while there, has been reported in the media, certain positions that the two new supervisors have taken, apparently with regard to their intent to continue their outside jobs. But we're still in the process of setting the salary for the position, not for these individuals and specifically what they have indicated they intend to do. And also, keeping in mind that there are three other supervisors who have been and continue to work full-time, and I believe they're doing a good job with the county. So, again, I don't think the fact that what may or may not have been said by these two new supervisors should affect our setting the salary for the position of full-time Board of Supervisor, Board of Supervisors, which is what we are, I believe, which is what we are tasked to do here.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to call a question.
The question has been called. All those in favor of proceeding to the motion, to voting on the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. We will do roll-call as we've done before. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Chido?
No.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Daphne?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
No.
And I am voting no as well. The nays have it. Are there any other motions to come before this committee?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that we recommend our compensation schedule to the Board of Supervisors to include an increase in regards to the supervisors, sheriff, attorney, and the other row offices, of an increase of 3%, reflective of the increase in the CPI over the last year.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think we're totally out of whack.
May I ask, Mr. Chido, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I think we're, I think we're not doing anybody, especially the taxpayers, any service by taking the road that we're traveling on. I see the compensation board as having some oversight and some, some authority to compensating according to endeavor. And I don't see automatically giving raises without some justification, accountability, and transparency going along with it as being totally out of whack. So, I'm not going to vote for any increase of any kind until we start addressing the full, the issue of full-time, part-time, and reorganization of, a look at reorganization. I think it's time to do it. And until we do that, I think this board is not doing anybody any favors. And I would vote no.
Any other discussion?
Would there be a way that you would be open to doing that if we distinguish between the Board of Supervisors and the other elected officials, Mr. Chido?
Say that again.
Would you be open to an increase or the 3% with respect to the other elected officials if we distinguish the Board of Supervisors, and if so, can we do that?
Yes, I would.
Is there an amendment?
Well, I would, I would move to amend to increase or do a 3% increase for the elected officials, and set aside the Board of Supervisors, so we could have a separate discussion as it relates to them.
I have no objection to that. So, just to clarify, we're talking about attorney, sheriff?
A 3% increase for all of the elected officials outside of the Board of Supervisors. So, yes, sheriff, county attorney, auditor, recorder, treasurer.
Yeah, no objections to that.
Mr. Brennan, I would just make the note that what we set here is the maximum that can be put in place, and that it's certainly, the Board of Supervisors will ultimately decide whether to approve the full amount that we send them as a recommendation, or to reduce that across the board in some way. So, I would suggest that we maintain the original, Mr. Skinner's original motion for 3% across the board. Skinner's original motion for 3% across the board.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. The vote is on the amendment, which is to, as I understand it, authorize a 3% raise to all of the elected officials excluding the Board of Supervisors. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, we will go to our roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chido?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Daphne?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
No.
And I vote no, but the ayes have it. And so we will, we have approved a 3% increase for everyone but the supervisors.
Mr. Brennan, I would move that we increase the supervisors' salary by 2.5%.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I don't see any distinction between 2.5 and 3. It's the principle of the thing I think we're talking about here. It's either nothing or whatever. I would vote no.
Well, certainly, my understanding at the, originally was that, the purpose of the amendment was to take out any discussion of the supervisors and make it separate. And so Mr. Quinn has made a, a motion at a, at a different number than we previously discussed. And I will further express, my, my concern is that, I think, again, I'm always worried about painting with too broad a brush. And I think if people have concerns about certain supervisors, you know, or, or things that have been reported, then, you know, we have addressed those in the discussions here today. But I think that our supervisors work very hard, are always available, and I'm uncomfortable not giving them any increase, certainly something below the CPI is what we're suggesting. But I'm willing to do that based upon the prior motion.
Well, and I agree. I, I have a hard time penalizing supervisors who've been in the job and been working full-time and working hard for the taxpayers, because we're concerned about the possibility. I mean, and clearly there's some legitimate concern with what kind of time will be allocated by some new supervisors. But without having that clearly in front of us, that, that is a concern to not give them any kind of increase whatsoever.
I would be willing to support an increase for supervisors if the, if the stipulation on the part-time supervisor was part of it. I mean, if you want, want to increase the base salary of $149,290 by 3% fine, as long as you make, make adjustment for the part-time supervisor. Well, you're not penalizing-
This is Lonnie, and I would echo similarly to what was shared, that I think that we've already discussed and it was already noted and voted, that that's out of our purview. So if we're here discussing what an increase would look like, I would agree that I don't, I don't see it being fair that we're penalizing all for a what-if, or something that we don't know for a fact. And it's the Board of Supervisors who is responsible for determining full-time and part-time work.
Is there any further discussion?
What's the motion?
2.5 increase.
The motion is raising the supervisor's salary 2.5%.
I'll give it one more try. I'll offer an amendment to that motion, that I would support the 2.5 if the category of part-time supervisor pay was offered as part of the compensation package. They could choose to be part-time. They could choose to be part-time, and therefore would be paid accordingly. They could choose to be part-time.
Is there a second to Mr. Chido's amendment?
Can you clarify that? Can you clarify what your amendment is?
The amendment is, as I understand it, the motion is increased by 2.5. I'm suggesting that if we amend that to say that 2.5 for full-time supervisor and part-time, and if they choose, and if the supervisor chooses to be part-time, they be paid at an hourly rate of whatever the new rate is divided by 2,000. They choose to be part-time.
Is there a second to Mr. Chido's amendment?
Doesn't Mr. Quinn need to accept the amendment?
Yeah, I would not accept a friendly amendment on that. And Scott, as a point of order, I'm not sure my motion was ever seconded. Maybe somebody's keeping better track than I am.
I thought Ms. Daphne seconded you.
It was. I seconded it.
I guess I, I would maybe move to amend that to say a 2.0, did you say 5?
What's that?
I, I would move to amend Mr. Quinn's motion to 2.5 for all full-time supervisors and let the Board of Supervisors figure out what part-time or, or full-time is. Because it-
Under my-
I'm not going to get into $150,000 or whatever. I just want to categorically do an increase for full-time supervisors, and then they can distinguish what that means to them. That would be my motion to amend Mr. Quinn's original motion.
And I understand-
Mr. Quinn?
I, I understand the sentiment behind that, and I, I, I'm fine with that. I think that's what we are setting the salary for is a full-time supervisor's position. So I think that's fine.
So the, we've done a lot of business here today, more than we do some years. So just so I'm clear, the, the motion as amended is recommending a 2.5% increase for all full-time supervisors. Is that correct, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I will move to a vote and we'll do the roll call again. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Mr. Chido?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Daphne?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
No.
And I vote no. So the motion fails.
Let's tee this up again. How about a motion for a 2% increase for the Board of Supervisors?
Second.
For all full-time Board of Supervisors.
Second.
2% has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think that goes along with the legislatively imposed cap on municipal growth, is that 2% is an appropriate number for this year.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chido?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Daphne?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And motion of 2% passes. Is there any other business to come before the compensation board this year?
The only comment I would make is, the statute requires us to look at a lot of different things, but the one thing that, that I don't see a lot is things from the private enterprise. We can look at this state, other counties, other states, federal government, state government, we have all that, but I don't, we never see anything in regards to private enterprise. I don't even know how that would be contemplated to gather, because that's not public information. But if there's anything that could be out there in regards to similar, similar positioned individuals in our county government, if we could have just, you know, ask, you know, the staff to just provide some information on that. Because really, all we have is the CPI information that might be private, obviously, while that's public too. But that's my thought, Chair, Mr. Chair.
I'm mindful of that. I do think, I do want to applaud the folks at Polk County HR. I do think they provide us with a lot of good information. And you're right, there's always something more that would be nice. If, if you all can find it, it would be terrific in my mind as well.
And I would just note, I know that in years past, we've had a lot of comparables outside of our jurisdiction or out of, outside of the state of Iowa. So I know that historically that has been provided. I would say that, to address public comment, that deferred compensation schedules, and that has been a part of our consideration in the past, that is information that is provided. So I do think that is important to note and address. So I, I, I guess that's, that's all I would say as it relates to those matters.
That is an excellent point, Ms. Galloway, and I wish I would have thought of it. So yes, let's please, let's add in a comparison of the deferred comp piece for next year as well. Is there any other business?
No, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
If it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And before we, before I do hang up here, I do want to just recognize Ms. McGowan always does a lovely job of getting us organized. And I know we are not always as responsive as we should be, so thank you for your patience. Thank you, Ralph, for calling in. I appreciate that. And welcome, and thank you to Josie Lewis, New Polk County HR. So with that, thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brennan.